This meeting of the City of Socorro State Council is set to begin. Gentlemen, please remove your hats and everyone please sign in to audit the tranche equipment. No disruptive behavior or hours will be tolerated and audited. Our subject group is genuinely an office of prosecution. [Inaudible]
Six oh three, the meeting is now called to order. Mr. Gonzalez, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Item number three, Establishment of Coram.
Rene Rodriguez is absent, Sister Nevades.
Here.
Well, [inaudible].
Here.
Mayor Elian Acquien.
Here.
Victor Perez is absent, and Ivan Colombia Lobo.
Here.
May you have a court?
Item number four, Public Comment.
First Speaker, Ferny Salcido. Mr. Salcido, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ferny Salcido. And here we are again. It's forty-nine months on the same issue. It's been, that equates to four years plus one month on the Vista Bonita that we have been opposed. And I'd just like to remind you all, we've gone over this time and time again, and we've hashed it and rehashed it. I'd just like to, for you to all know that our feelings are still the same. I don't think the City of Socorro really benefit from that development, being that it is on the outskirts of the City of Socorro. I think we'll just get all the headaches that come in along with that type of population. The proposed development is not such of a modern-type development with the streets, the sewer, and everything as far as the drainage. With the south ponding, I don't believe that it would be in the benefit of the public, our immediate public, our citizens of the City of Socorro, to be exposed to mosquito diseases and such. So, like I said, we've discussed this time and time again, and I'd just like to remind you all. And thank you for your time.
José Suñiga. Mr. Suñiga, you have three minutes.
Bueno, en español. En español, pues que? Bueno, me llamo José Suñiga, y estoy aquí para solicitar el apoyo. Soy presidente de aquí de Socorro, Texas. Y me conformé sobre los impuestos que están cobrando la propiedad por el distrito del Paso. Entonces, este, en dos años, a partir del diecisiete, mi casa estaba valorada en ochenta y seis mil. Al dieciocho subió a ciento nueve, y ahora ciento veintiséis este año. Entonces, son aumentos exagerados. Y vengo aquí pues para solicitar el apoyo de, del concilio de aquí de Socorro, a ver en qué forma se puede tratar esto, porque no obstante que la ley lo limita, ellos son un diez por ciento anual. Y es un caso de mejoras. En mi caso, no, no ha sucedido, se van hasta un cuarenta y dos por ciento en dos años. Y eso es, me conformé aquí. Tengo, yo saqué, tengo entendido que no a todas las personas se les cobra. Este, pero a los que nos sacan la lista, pues se quieren desquitar con uno. Yo investigué a la directora y una supervisora ahí, y ellos tienen tres inmuebles cada uno, y ninguno, ninguno de ellos ha sufrido ningún aumento tan exagerado como los que estamos sufriendo varios residentes de aquí. Entonces, eso es todo. A ver qué se puede hacer. Y gracias.
South Chagoya. Mayor, for the record, Mr. Roberto Rodríguez arrived to the meeting at six oh seven. Ivan Colombia Lobos. Mr. Chagoya. Mr. Chagoya, you have three minutes.
Thank you. On this day, nineteen forty-four, over seventy-three thousand Americans fought in the ensuing Battle of Normandy. I'm not aware if we have any World War II veterans that live in the City of Socorro, but if they do, I would personally, personally like to thank them. I would like to also thank Representative Will Hurd, who was pictured placing U.S. flags on grave sites and remembering the fallen. Also thank you for representing for the forty-five thousand veterans in his district, which we belong to. Also want to thank some city staff and some council. Mr. Rodríguez, at large, for the City of Socorro, for their respect and listening to my concerns, and for always providing me the answers on my concerns. I hope you continue to represent our city. You are a true leader and always show the best interest for our city. Ms. Villa Lobos Colon, you're always showing your humbleness to your district. Your district is very lucky to have a good voice, who is always showing compassion and addressing the concerns of your district. Mr. Pérez, I haven't worked with you yet, but when I attend these meetings and watch the videos online, you're always paying attention to detail and thinking through before making a decision that goes unnoticed. Mr. Gonzalez, IT Director, always running around and sharing means of communication devices working and the development of the city app is total genius. Ms. Marine, HR Director, for always listening to my concerns and for following through with my concerns. Chief Burton, I told the time, a time to Mr. Rodríguez, that the City of Socorro got a star. Changes occurred rapidly in the PD Department. Ideas were exchanged. You are off on the right foot of implementing changes in your department. All of you that I have mentioned, I can see your desire and your leadership and your humbleness, but most of all, your dedication to Socorro to make it better, and I thank you for that.
Ivan Colombia Lobo.
I'm gonna speak from here, if I may. Just, just wanted to express for item thirty, sorry. I apologize, I should have, it's, it's the item for Bonita Vista seventeen, seventeen, I apologize, seventeen. Just, a lot of our constituents couldn't come, I got phone calls today. They could not come, they were on vacation, they were at graduations, they were at other commitments or could not get off work, but want to remind you that there's no changes, as they can, they cannot see any changes to today's proposal, and that they're still not in compliance with the ordinances. Thank you.
Mayor, those are all our speakers. Mr. Rodan.
Mayor, this time, I'd like to move up items number thirty-two, thirty-four, twenty-four, and thirty. Yes.
One more time, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, thirty-four, twenty-four, and thirty.
I second the motion.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevades.
Yes.
Well, [inaudible].
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent, and Ivan Colombia Lobo.
Yes. Item number thirty-two, Discussion and Action to Approve the Appointment of Andres Gómez to the Historical Landmark Commission, Place Seven.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevades.
Yes.
Well, [inaudible]. Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent, and Ivan Colombia Lobo.
Yes.
Item number thirty-four, Swearing In of Newly Appointed Commissioners.
Aye, Andres Gómez. Do you solemnly swear? Did I have not directly or indirectly? Paid? Offered? Promised to pay? Contributed or promised to contribute? Any money? Or thing of value? Or public, any? Or promise any public or employment? As reward to secure? My appointment or confirmation thereof? Aye, Andres Gómez. Do solemnly swear? That I will faithfully execute? The duties? Of the office? Of the Historical Landmark Commission? Of the City of Socorro, Texas? And will to the best of my ability? Reserve? Protect and defend? The Constitution and laws? Of the United States? And of the state.
Item number twenty-four, Discussion and Action to Approve Work Authorization Number Three in the amount of three million eight hundred and eighty thousand three hundred and seventy-nine with sixty-five cents for Arterio One, sixteen eighty-two Boulevard Project to direct Dennebaum Engineering Company, Opaso LLC, to deliver to TechStop the development review and approval of the environmental document.
Make a motion to approve, second.
Good afternoon, I'm Mike Eminem, the City Planner. So this item is a functionality of delivering work that is tied to the Opaso Metropolitan Plan Organization. The MPO has awarded the City Engineering Services to develop through federal aid a documentation that is required under NEPA, which is the National Environmental Protection Act. And so essentially is that what is before you is the authorization to have Dennebaum develop the environmental, the schematic, and then, and any other type of design to include the potential acquisition of right-of-way through the documentation for Arterio One. Arterio One, or sixteen eighty-two, it's also known, that the MPO is a new facility. It's a four-lane divided highway that would bring new connection from I-ten all the way down to Socorro Road. And the engineers also here, if there's any questions.
Rene Rodríguez.
Aye.
Sister Nevades.
Yes.
Well, [inaudible].
Yes.
Victor Pérez is absent, and Ivan Colombia Lobo.
Yes.
Item number thirty, Discussion and Action on Approving the Issuance of the Fiscal Year Ending September thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, Annual Financial Report by SBNG Certified Public Accountants. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Good afternoon, members of council and city management and also audience. We're here representing SBNG. We're a local CPA firm, and this is our first year assisting the city with their audit. I have here Joanne Nugent, Audit Partner in Charge of the Audit. And my name is Dejo Cabrera, I'm the Audit Manager and also the Direct Supervisor for the Audit. So, we're really happy to present this first-year audit to you. We are gonna try to make our presentation nice, sweet, short, but of course, if you would like to dig into any of the details or if you have questions, feel free to let us know. Yes.
So, so our audience can know, I mean, the city does every year an audit.
Correct.
What he meant by the first year is that that company is doing it for the first year.
Yes.
Yeah, so just clarify that, 'cause I don't want people to say, "Oh my God, did he do it last year or the year before?"
No, 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 no.
I just want them to know that.
Every year.
Right.
Every year we do it, but this is a new company we hired to do it.
Correct. And as a matter of fact, you can find previous audits in the Socorro website, right? Which is where we actually saw them, before we got engaged. Okay, so without further ado, let's get into the summary. So, the way how we would like to show this is walk you over the financial statements. Each one of the members of council should have a copy of our audit report that came in the agenda packet. It is an eighty-page document, but we'll go over the most relevant items. Then we'll talk a little bit about the finances of the company, and we'll end up with the results of the audit, whether there are findings and recommendations, okay? So, the highlight of the audit is, of course, the statement of net position, it's a balance sheet. The balance sheet is in page five of the audit report, if you want to follow along. So the balance sheet is a statement showing the assets and liabilities of the town, and this report is as of the end of last fiscal year, is as of September, okay? So, total assets were forty-one million dollars, and this is a twenty-two percent increase from the previous fiscal year, okay? The majority of this increase is coming in infrastructure, in streets, in the rehabilitation of boulevards and drainage areas that the city has been conducting. A big portion of these expenses are coming from federal funding, from TechStop and from the U.S. Department of Federal Highways. Liabilities represent what the city owes to its creditors, and at the end of this fiscal year, the liabilities were twenty-three million dollars. Out of that, the majority of it represents bonds, right? You have a series of different bonds outstanding. And what we expect from liabilities is that over years, unless you have a new bond, we expect it to be decreasing. So we did have a five percent decrease. Net position is basically the balance, the difference between assets and liabilities, and that was eighteen million dollars, represented an increase from last year to, from the previous year to the end of eighteen. And whenever we have an increase, it means that the city as a whole did better off than the better year. Basically, we had net income in, in this fiscal year. So let's talk a little bit more, in that same page five, you can see total cash on hand, pretty close to four million dollars. You also had some restricted cash, the majority of it is restricted to be used for infrastructure. That's one and a half million dollars. You can see the total infrastructure investment, that's thirty-three million dollars, and that represents the amount that has been invested in streets over the many years that the city has been in existence, and this is net of depreciation. And like I said, the certificate's an obligation, pretty close to that twenty-one million dollar mark. Let's move on to page six, if you're following the report. Page six talks about the expenses and the revenues of the city. Total revenue for fiscal year eighteen was eighteen million dollars. And a big chunk of it, almost half of it, seven point nine million dollars represented grants from TechStop, okay? Now, these grants for TechStop are specifically being used in the rehabilitation of boulevards, like the New Waco Tanks Road, and also Horizon and Blueford Road. So these are recognized as in-kind federal awards, okay? And they go in their books. Expenses are ten million dollars. And again, these expenses here in this statement, they don't include infrastructure, because infrastructure is in the balance sheet. So this are just operating expenses. There is, let me see, the report has shown a deficit, but I don't even sure that's correct. I apologize, so, there is, there is a change in net position of seven point nine million dollars, which means that the revenues exceeded the expenses. There's a mistake in the presentation, but the, the amount of the finances is correct. So going forward, also to point out, the property tax revenue, which is one of the most representative line items of how the city is doing, had a, represents thirty-eight percent of the revenues of the city, and it had a modest increase from seventeen to eighteen. So that's a good indicator of the growth in the town. You also have sales taxes, which is eight percent of total revenue, and that represented a five percent increase from the previous year. So whenever you see an increase in sales tax, that normally means that there's an increase in the commercial activity in the city. And also, when you see an increase in property taxes, that normally is an increase in property values, increase in populations. So we have good indications on those two metrics. This same statement on page six, you can also see the amount of federal income that was received from grants at seven point nine million dollars. The largest expense, of course, is the Infrastructure Department at three point five million dollars. The Police Department is also one of the biggest departments at three point two. And after that, General Government Administration, which includes Finance, Admin, and HR, that, those expenses were one and a half million dollars. The interest expense was a million dollars. Last but not least, depreciation expense, which is the amortization of your streets. It's a non-cash expense, that was about a million dollars for the year. Let's talk a little bit about the fund-based financial statements now. The financial statements that are just described are normally what your creditors look at, they have a long-term view. And the fund-based financial statements, which are in page, start on page seven, those financial statements are essentially in a budgetary basis, so they're basically focusing on your current resources. So you can see here that your fund balance is eight point nine million dollars, the fund assets. The fund balance is six million dollars. And then, following that, we have a little table here showing a comparison between the different governmental funds. The General Fund is the most important fund. That's where the majority of the expenses of the government occur. That fund on its own had six point eight million dollars, and they, it had a fund balance of four point eight million dollars. Now, something very important for the city, the city has a minimum fund balance policy, and the policy is to reserve at least sixteen percent of the expenses in perpetuity for the following year in case there's several contingencies. So, that reserve is actually one point five million dollars, and it's included in this four point nine figure that you see there. So essentially, we don't want the fund balance to go beneath those one point five million dollars. You also have some other funds, the Special Revenue Fund is where you have some of your police grants. The Debt Service Fund is what's being used to pay off your bonds. And then the Capital Project Funds is where you have your bond money, and that's basically where you keep track of your, your bond expenditures. Now, that particular fund, the Capital Projects Fund, had a loss of three point three million dollars. So essentially, that means that three point three million dollars were spent in roads and infrastructure in this fiscal year. So, we'd like to go really quick over a five-year analysis. We like to show this so you can get a, you know, a better idea of how the, the city has changed in the last few years. And this is not in the audit, but it's included here in the presentation. And like I was mentioning, some of the things that we look at, that creditors look at, is the changes in your property tax revenue and your sales revenue. You can see for your property taxes from two thousand fourteen, the amount of revenue increased every single year, and now we're at seven point one million dollars. Also for sales taxes, those have remained a little bit more stable over the years, but nonetheless, from seventeen to eighteen, we did have a, a jump there. The grant revenues is where we see a really big increase. And the reason for that is because in two thousand eighteen is when some of those TechStop projects were completed, right? So essentially, the Horizon Boulevard reconstruction was completed. Substantially, most of the old Waco Tank Road expansion was completed. And we have to recognize the portion of that that's being funded by TechStop, so that's grant revenue. Also in part with that, you see the infrastructure, how in two thousand fourteen you had sixty million dollars, and it has more than doubled now in two thousand eighteen with the assistance of your bonds and also with the assistance of TechStop. Your long-term debt has steadily been decreasing. And it went from twenty-two million to twenty-one, which was the, the amount of principal you paid in two thousand eighteen. Your total assets have remained more or less stable, close to the forty million mark. And then also, your total cash has remained pretty close to that four million mark, even though you have been spending a lot on infrastructure. So you've been, you've managed to keep a good cash balance, a good reserve in the bank, while also using federal money and grants and bond money to be able to invest in infrastructure. So that's what we're seeing here in this analysis. So let's talk a little bit about the highlights for the audit. We are really pleased to present an unmodified opinion. If, if you want to look at our audit report, it's part of the, the package that you have. The audit report is one of the first pages, it's actually page two. But the gist of the audit report is essentially that we have evaluated and audited different areas, essentially all the areas of risk within the city's operations. And we have evaluated the financial statements, and we're convinced that there's no material misstatements on the financial statement. So that's what a non-modified opinion means. It's always good to know what some of the major areas of the audit were, where we spent most of our time. And we did spend most of our time looking at grants. We spent a lot of time looking at property taxes. We spent a lot of time looking at debt, and of course, the investments that you've made in infrastructure. So the majority of the audit time goes to those areas, but nonetheless, we do look at other areas as well. A big part of the audit is evaluating whether there has been any non-compliance or there was any deficiencies in internal controls. And we did have four findings. Now, the fact that we have four findings does not mean that you don't get a clean report. You still get a, a clean report as far as your financial report goes, but you do have four instances of non-compliance with grants and regulations, and we will discuss those briefly. Another thing to point out is that we did not become aware of any fraud or anything that we as auditors would consider abuse from part of one of the officers. So, under, yes, sir?
Can you repeat that again? No, no, it's, it's important for me.
Sure.
And, and for all of us, I, I could probably speak for all of us on that aspect.
Okay.
Because we get people to say that, "Oh, we're doing something, we're frauding the people and our taxpayers," and stuff like that.
Right, so.
So can you repeat that again one more time?
Let, let me rephrase that then. We as auditors are required to consider the possibility of fraud and abuse for whatever client that we audit. So, a byproduct of the audit is to decide procedures to be able to identify fraud. And if we do identify fraud, even if it's immaterial, we have to report it. So we did not become aware of any fraud or anything that could look like fraud, which would be abuse. And then we, let, let me talk a little bit about the findings nonetheless. So, like I said, we had four findings, and here we get a little bit more into the technicalities of the audit. The first finding had to do with the way how the accounting was being done for the infrastructure grants. Some of those grants, we, we had to do a couple of audit adjustments to get comfortable with them. We discussed that with the Finance Director, we also discussed that with the City Manager. We had some recommendations as to how management can work closer with the City Planner to make sure that the accounting for these grants is done correctly. We didn't, management didn't drop the ball or anything like that, it's just that the accounting was missing a, a little bit more precision. And some of the older grants, we found that they had not been booked correctly. So we had to go back and we had to do a restatement to some of the numbers that were presented in the previous audit. So that's what this finding is. And essentially, we, we don't have anything that would be a question cost for a grant here, you know, something indicating that the grant trust money was not spent correctly. It is just the accounting for the grants that we're recommending to management. Works closer with us, and works closer also with the Planning Director to make sure that, that we're always aware of what grants we have out there from TechStop and from other sources, that, that we're not, I guess, not following up with reporting them in the audit, would be the best way to say it.
And I have a question on that real quick. Since we're on that subject, we did, in two thousand and eighteen is when we changed grant writers, correct? Is that correct? So, did you find, the, the four that you found were? So, did you find the, the four that you found were the previous grant writer?
Uh, a combination of things, and we'll get into that a little bit more, but you, I, I'm not sure grant writer is the right term, I, I would say grant manager, grant supervisor, the person that was actually overseeing these grants.
Okay.
Uh, some of these grants are related to police departments, some of these grants are related to drainage, but the grant that's specific to this finding is the Tech Dot grant, and the Tech Dot grant is managed by the city planner.
So what that was, was the agreement for the Horizon Boulevard that happened way back in two thousand and ten, which the record keeping that did wasn't up to par, so we weren't unable to find...
Right, so...
And some, some decision that occurred at that time, there was no record keeping for that, and that's what we found.
Right, so what happened is, uh, really is that we had to basically talk to Tech Dot and figure out what was going on with those grants, to try to get a better understanding, a- and that's what we're recommending to the city, that we would like them to be more on top of them, that's really what the finding is.
Okay.
Uh, finding number two is related to...
I just wanna, I just wanna add something to that, and the reason why it took this long is because the grant doesn't stop until, it used to have a couple of years after it, the project is complete, because, um, you have to tie up loose ends on the contracts and so...
That is correct.
So, that's why it took forever, and that's why they're letting us know, because it took, uh, a, a long while, but then you still have a couple of years after the project is done, and therefore that's why they found those discrepancies, and they're letting us know now. We already changed that, we already have a, a, a grant, so we're okay.
Right, we're going through, we're going, we're going through growing pains here in Socorro, and this is part of it.
So we just wanna know that, that it's not something that we did now, that we're currently doing, it's something that was done...
Exactly.
Years ago that, because the project was finalized, it still takes, uh, the state allows you a couple of years, and then they'll say they wrote it off, and then, then that's where we're here to do that.
Correct, and, and really, uh, a- another part of this finding is for management to make sure that if there's other grants still going on, that basically, we're not missing out on any of the compliance requirements.
Okay.
It's all it is. Uh, we believe this finding will be cleared in the next reporting period, so it, it's just a one-time thing. Uh, finding number two had to do with a completely different grant, and it's also related to a former member of, of the city's management team. Uh, it has to do with a grant that was awarded by the Texas Department of Agriculture. Now, this grant was a three hundred thousand dollar grant, and it was used to build drainage around the Spark Arroyo. Uh, during that time, the grant was awarded, I believe, in two thousand and sixteen, and most of the money was spent in two thousand and seventeen. And you might be asking, well, why are you guys even looking at this, because it was two or three years ago? Something very similar to what you just described. In two thousand and eighteen, uh, the grantor was still asking questions about this grant, and, and there were some unresolved issues, uh, from the previous person that was hired to administer this grant. Uh, and you might have been aware of this, because it was in, addressed in, in, in the council meeting in February, uh, that this grant remained open, right? And, and the grantor was basically still expecting the city to respond, uh, on some unresolved questions regarding this grant. Uh, so finally, on April of two thousand and nineteen, this grant case was closed, uh, and, uh, the, the current grant supervisor was able to respond to the request for, for a desk review, which is what this was. Uh, what they found, which is, what we're reporting, is that the previous manager with the procurement done to hire this person was not in line, right? So the city hired an external consultant to, to basically administer this grant, and this person did not keep enough files to be able to show how you guys hired him in the first place, right? So, during this time, you, the city paid him thirty-four thousand dollars, and we're showing that as a question cost, because we're showing that, we're saying that because the procurement was not in line, the grantor could potentially ask for that money, right? The grantor actually only asked for seven thousand dollars, uh, which was, has not even been paid to the city, so it was just denied from the last request. However, we have to look at all the services that were, uh, paid to this firm, uh, and that's why we report the full thirty-four thousand dollars instead of the seven thousand dollars. Uh, as you can see, the status of the finding has been resolved, because, uh, the grantor has not requested any further action up till now, other than for management to tie it up under procurement policies. Uh, so we're, we're satisfied with that. Uh, finding number three, again, going back to the whole issue with the Tech Dot grants, since we had to do some adjustments to the books for that, uh, we have to say that the accounting was not accurate at that point. And the reason why it was not accurate is because the information was just not available. It's not a matter of, of management not following up or something like that, it's a matter of, you know, the information was not there, the communication didn't happen, it, it was until this audit that it got resolved, and that's what we have finding number three. And finding number four, going back to the same grant that I was just describing with the Texas Department of Agriculture, there were a few other things that the, they found that were wrong. Uh, an environmental report was not done correctly, and there was an issue with, uh, payroll certification on the contractor that was working on this project. And, uh, what we did is we reviewed the response that, uh, the city, the city, uh, grant manager did, and, uh, essentially, she has responded to all of everything that this grantor has asked to do. So we believe this finding is resolved, and, and there's no question cost here either. Uh, so those were the four findings. What we'll do is, in the following audit period, we are required to follow up on the status of the findings, and if we don't find any evidence indicating that these findings have not been corrected, then they will not show up again in two thousand and nineteen, and that's what we believe will happen. Uh, the last thing, there's a few audit recommendations. Uh, we met with the finance director and with the city manager, and, uh, we discussed these i- in detail. These are not findings, they're not part of the audit, there's just some recommendations, and I would just like to touch on them really quickly. Uh, the first one is that we would like to propose that you formalize your internal audit procedures even further. Uh, you do have an internal auditor now, the, the position was created, I believe, in November, and having an internal auditor, uh, allows you to prevent, you know, findings, legal findings like the ones that happen really easily. Uh, what we recommend is that you guys come up with an actual written, uh, internal policy manual, and with some written procedures that can help you as council members really monitor the results of the internal audit. Uh, another thing on the internal audit is that we would like to propose that you guys try to form some kind of committee or some kind of group that is independent from management, and that group should be the one to whom the internal auditor reports to. So that would be our main recommendation. It could be a subset of the members of town council, or it could be a completely separate group, not necessarily the same members of town council, but the whole idea is to have a, a, a group of people that are separate from management to where the internal auditor reports to. So that would be our main recommendation here. Uh, and also using the internal auditor to increase segregation of duties, to review some of the work that the finance director does, uh, and to make, to increase checks and balances, basically, that was our recommendation. Uh, something that was done in this audit year, uh, by the finance director is that he actually did an inventory of all the property and equipment that the city had. So that had been a recommendation that had been reoccurring for many years, and with the help of all the department heads, finally in two thousand and eighteen, uh, Mr. Castellano was able to provide that inventory to the auditors, and that was really helpful for us. It really gave us a lot of comfort when we were looking at that particular area of the audit. So we recommend that he definitely continues to do that, and if he can start doing it earlier in the year, uh, with the help of the internal auditor, that, that would make it more efficient, because it is a lengthy task. I mean, it involves collaboration from everybody, all of the departments. Another thing that we saw, also the investment policy, you're supposed to be looking at your investment policy every year, it hasn't been looked at since, I believe, two thousand and six. So it's something that we recommend that you, as council members, bolt on, on a yearly basis, and it doesn't have to change, little tweaks here and there might change, but it's been a while since it has been updated, so we, we decided to bring it up as a management, a recommendation. Uh, and that's it so far.
Ms. Anavos? Regarding the inventory...
Right.
Uh, is it, um, have you, well, is it wiser to have vehicles and other equipment, other equipment being computers, um, other vehicles that we use like in street department? What, what are we talking about here, inventory?
We're talking about all those things. Uh, but in particular, the vehicles being the ones that have the, the higher value, uh, it, obviously, it's, it's easier to steal a computer than it is to steal or do something with a car. So, so you wanted to keep track of, of the little things like computers. Uh, what we do in our firm is that we have serial numbers for every computer, uh, and for every piece of expensive equipment, and it's nice to have that in a list, and normally the IT manager is the one that handles the IT equipment, all the computers, and, and basically knows what computers we have and what computers we don't have. Uh, but as far as other equipment, the main thing would be vehicles. With vehicles, it's complicated, especially on the police department, because some of them, they might get trashed, uh, out in a mission or something, or, I mean, they're exposed to more risk, so it's good to do an inventory of the vehicles, and not just, basically not just on paper, but actually go and look at them and see if the vehicles are still there, and if they're in good shape, if they're not damaged. Uh, communication is very important, and if we have turnover in departments, maybe the finance director may not know that the chief decided to do a trade-in for an old police truck, or maybe the chief got into a lease agreement or something like that. So that's why we think this procedure is very important, to make sure that the records are always updating what our fleet is. And last but not least, we also have some other things like excavators and rollers and things that we use for the streets. Uh, again, it doesn't hurt to look at them once a year to make sure they're still there, they're in good shape, they're not damaged.
Does this also, I'm, I know this is petty, but, um, does this also include, like, shovels and for, for the street department, none of that?
No, none of that, none of that.
Not important like that?
We're looking at the bigger things. We're recommending of the bigger things, uh, and, and of course, the office equipment that would be valuable, like computers and scanners and stuff like that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Anavos?
So we tag it, and now that we have it for the auditor, she does random checks of her, her, and both of her five weekends, still in the department.
Okay, thank you.
So that's something that we're already...
Um, I would like to just make, uh, one comment. Uh, I did the audit for City of Socorro in nineteen ninety-six, which probably is before you were born, but, um, the city has come a long way. You have some very, very good people leading this city, and I'm very proud to be a part of, you know, the audit and to be able to provide you with recommendations that I know you're just, you can't wait to, to get those implemented. Um, the city has changed, you've had a lot of challenges, and you've met them, and you've gone beyond them, and you should be very proud of your accomplishments. Thank you for allowing us to do this audit for you.
Thank you.
That's for all our staff.
I believe, uh, there's, uh, the, the council is the, the ones that's responsible for approving the audit, so at this point, we're ready to complete our audit, uh, pending on your approval. So I'm not sure if there's a motion that needs to be made or...
Who made it?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving back to consent agenda, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve, second.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Item number nine, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro master plan and rezoning of block five, Bag Estates, Lot twenty, located at ten one thirteen Stedham Circle from C one, light commercial to R two, medium-density residential for the existing apartments. Six forty-seven, public hearing is now open.
Item number ten, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro master plan and rezoning of block five, Bag Estates, Lot twenty, located at ten one thirteen Stedham Circle from C one, light commercial to R two, medium-density residential for the existing apartments.
Good evening, mayor and council.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to discuss.
No, no, we have to say, uh...
To approve or deny?
I'll go with, uh, our staff recommended, no, I guess, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, due to our staff recommends.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Good evening, mayor and council, on, on this particular item, the recommendation here is, there, the, the petition is to change the property from commercial, light commercial to R two. Uh, the recommendation that we made to the planning and zoning commission is to deny R two, but approve legal non-conforming R one, because this property has some apartments. This addition was established in nineteen seventy-one, the apartments were built before nineteen eighty-six. When, when the buildings were built, they were used for, it was, it used to be a restaurant. So when the city adopted the first zoning map, they classified this property as light commercial. Later, when the city incorporated, uh, the restaurant stopped operating, and they started using the buildings for, as apartments. Yes, sir.
Was that Rincon de las Lunas?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, they had some nice burritos, right? But anyways.
Yes, the owner, uh, mentioned that it used to be called Rincon de las Lunas Restaurant, and then they shut down. Oh, so now they're renting the buildings. So, uh, the original request for R two was because the R two is the only zone that allows apartments. However, because these buildings are non-conforming structures, we recommend that you, uh, rezonate to R one, legal non-conforming. The reason for that is because a moment those apartments are modified or destroyed or they burn, um, the zoning that will remain would be R one, and they will have to rebuild as R one, and it's compatible with the surrounding zone.
Ms. Josep?
I have a question for Jim. Jim, so when I made my motion to approve the recommendation from staff, that should be it, or do I have to further and say with that stipulation that our staff just recommended with that?
Yeah, I, I think it's a little unclear, because the recommendation on paper was approval of the alternative provided, but it doesn't specifically say, for purposes of clarity, then I would say, if your client are permitted to say approval of the, of the alternative identified, that the, uh, that the planning zoning commission, uh, passed, which was a change, to deny R two, but to approve L one, C R one.
Okay, then that will be my motion. So I'll resent my original motion to reflect what our staff recommends to be my motion, which would be to, can you repeat that again?
Yes, that, that way, uh, the property would be zoned R one, legal non-conforming, the apartments would be allowed to continue to operate as long as, uh, nothing happens to them, they're not modified, destroyed, or, uh, altered.
But then you're also denying the, the request to change R two.
Yes.
Correct.
And, and, I'm sorry. And, and our staff didn't, uh, put that precise here, it's not in written, but our Board of Directors did, uh, commissioners did, okay?
Second.
It's mentioned on, under the alternative on the first page, that's what we meant by approving the alternative, instead of R two, classify it R one.
I was calling, I said, it's frustrating, right?
Well, it's because it says staff recommendation, and then at the bottom, it doesn't recommend that, but if you turn to the other, the first page alternative, it's under the alternative.
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I think to avoid the confusion, it should be written on the staff recommendation as well.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, is that okay, Ms. Anavos? Thank you.
You, you second my motion.
Aye.
Yes.
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 Item number eleven, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of Lee Clark Survey, two ninety-three, A, A B S...
A B S T sixty-two fifty-seven tract one each located at ten twenty-four. Robin from R one, single family residential to C two, general commercial plus a conditional use permit for a mechanic. Six fifty-two, public hearing is now open. Six fifty-three, public hearing is now closed. Item number twelve, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed rezoning of Lee Clark Survey, two ninety-three A B S T sixty-two fifty-seven tract one each located at ten twenty-four. Robin from R one, single family residential to C two, general commercial plus a conditional use permit for a mechanic.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
On this one, they're asking for a zoning change to C two and a conditional use permit. The property is currently classified as R one. There is a building there. Also, for the record, we are not related in any way. We just share the same last name. They also have a building in the back that was being used as a mechanic shop. But currently, the building is vacant. And they're asking for a zoning change to use it for a, a truck business. So it's going to look similar to the one they have behind the property, just for storage of trucks. And then they want to use, they want the condition use permit for the, to use a mechanic shop for their own truck repairs.
Joe?
Ms. Yellos?
So if they are granted the mechanic shop, they can work on any vehicle, including small vehicles? Or it has to be eighteen wheelers?
They can, but that's not their intention. Their intention is to use the property for their storage of their trucks. They have a trucking company and then the mechanic, the shop in the back, they just want to use it to change oils or whatever on their own trucks.
But they can work on anything else and charge for it and be a business?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Aye. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number thirteen, public hearing of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro Parks Master Plan to adopt sections of the Paso del Norte Trail Master Plan Alignments four point O, four B, four C, four D that are within city limits as phase one of the citywide trails network.
Make a motion to approve?
Second, it's public hearing. Six fifty-five, public hearing is now open.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Alejandra Valdez, Grants Coordinator. I'm here with Ms. Yeller from the Paso del Norte Health Foundation, who will speak also on this item. Firstly, I just wanted to introduce it and say that the Paso del Norte Health Foundation has spearheaded the development of the Paso del Norte Trail. And they've done a wonderful job of inviting our local municipalities and our regional partners to take part in the development of that master plan. The trail is intended to start from the Texas-New Mexico border and travel down through our Mission Valley area, all the way down to Favors, Texas. And it really has a potential to impact our region in terms of quality of life, health and fitness, as well as the potential for economic development. And so we really want to adopt the segments of the trails that the Paso del Norte Health Foundation Master Plan has identified that are within our city limits. I just want to point out that the history of Socorro is directly tied to our agricultural past. Our local canals are identified in the National Register of Historic Places for their contribution to our local, regional agricultural history. And so we're very proud of that. We know that our community has walked these canals for hundreds of years and they continue to do so to this day. So we're very excited about this project.
Okay. Six fifty-seven, public hearing is now closed. Item number fourteen, second reading and adoption of an ordinance for the proposed amendment to the City of Socorro Parks Master Plan to adopt sections of the Paso del Norte Trail Master Plan Alignments four point O, four B, four C, four D that are within city limits as phase one of the citywide trails network.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Good evening, thank you so much for the invitation to be here. My name is Tracy Yellen, I work with the Paso del Norte Health Foundation. And if you would indulge me just for a few minutes, I wanted to walk you through just a couple of slides that shows, kind of gives you the vision and alignment of this proposed trail across El Paso County. So of course, we see trails as important to spur economic development, to really recognize the rich cultural heritage of our community, you know, including that's parallel to the Rio Grande and enhance transportation options, particularly in this area and across the city, and of course, for us to improve health. You can see there are a couple of pictures here of trails that have been built in other cities. You may have seen or heard about the Katy Trail in Dallas. Or there's a large trail in Atlanta that's going all the way around the city of Atlanta. And they think twenty to thirty percent of all the users right now are coming from outside of their city to enjoy it, in addition to residents using that amenity. We have recently completed three point four miles of the trail on the Playa Drain from Escarate Park to Riverside High School. The Playa Drain segment is now in use and available to the public. We hope to continue building each segment, sort of mile by mile, segment by segment. And this, of course, is part of that larger sixty-mile trail network. So you can see, they're not just, you know, pavement. Right now, we're building asphalt, ten-foot asphalt with concrete curbs. And we just completed a little pilot project with the irrigation district from, on the Franklin Canal from Presa to Loop Three Seventy-five. So we're kind of showing how along Alameda, which is the spine of the trail from really downtown El Paso to the Playa Drain and then all the way through the Mission Valley and the Agricultural District Torneo, how we can create this really wonderful space along the Franklin Canal and then loops and spurs to connect really important spaces like the Rio Bosque and the Socorro Mission and the San Luis Obispo Mission and so on. The master plan was funded by the Health Foundation. We had a technical assistance grant from the National Park Service that also came into town. We had multiple public meetings and stakeholder meetings, like was mentioned, with municipalities and residents and, you know, all kinds of local government organizations. This is the proposed alignment over sixty miles, which begins, like she said, in the Upper Valley, goes through UTEP and downtown, through the MCA area and the zoo, or to the zoo through the MCA area, and then the Playa Drain into the Mission Valley and then all the way to past Torneo. This is a nice breakdown to show where the trail is located throughout the county. So nearly eight miles of the proposed trail spine is in the city of Socorro. So, you know, a big portion, one-sixth, almost one-sixth of the entire trail alignment, or a little less than that, is actually in the city of Socorro. So it's a great way to connect the city and the county. Someday, when it's finished, we'll all ride it or walk it or ride it together. Or, you know, we can go, people can go segment by segment so they can come and enjoy loops here or in other areas and use it for active transportation. I have a son that plays basketball, so I was at a slita high school one day. And so I said, well, I'm going to go jog. He was in between games, I'm going to see what it's like to run on Alameda. And, you know, not the most fun experience in the world. So I know having this trail amenity and in this area in particular is going to be a wonderful addition. So we are, we really appreciate your consideration of adopting the segments that are in the Socorro area. You have the descriptions of those alignments. And then here's a map, the dotted brown lines show the main spine. And then those yellow kind of loops and spurs show the connectivity on other irrigation canals to important places and through other neighborhoods. And these are probably the, you know, first phases of areas that could be extended also north of Socorro or whatever direction that is. And, you know, we can keep building these quality of life amenities throughout this area. Another example? Okay. Any questions?
I do.
Ms. Yellos?
My question is, I know we are going to obtain grants for the building of these projects, but how about maintaining it? Can we come back and how often can we come back and utilize those grants? I think it's important for our constituents to know that there's grants out there to maintain it afterwards.
Yeah, maintenance is a big issue and really important. I think as these are built on the Franklin Canal with concrete, there'll be less maintenance required than the segments that are built with asphalt and concrete curbing. I think the biggest issue will be the landscaping that, you know, will be built along where we're allowed to on these canals. The way, the city, in the city of El Paso, the trail segments are largely being funded by grants and the operation and maintenance is largely be assumed by those municipalities. So to the extent that you're successful pursuing those funding sources, then I would say, yes, you'd have the opportunity to subsidize the maintenance with future grant opportunities.
Thank you.
Aye. Yes.
Jim, I have a question. I own property on the route of one of these two, can I still vote on this or should I abstain?
Yeah, I need to know where it's located, which actually whether it's contiguous areas.
It's right on it.
Within?
Is it touching?
It's touching it.
Okay. It would be safer to discuss.
Okay, I abstain.
For that reason?
Yeah.
Victor Perez de Sesto and Ivan Colombe.
Yes. Mr. Nevada?
Oh, Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to move up item number twenty-three.
Second.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Great presentation.
Yes. Item number twenty-three, discussion on action and approval of arterial one local project advance funding agreement made by and between the state of Texas acting by and through the Texas Department of Transportation and the City of Socorro in the amount of four million eight hundred and thirty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-one dollars. Do you have a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Second. Good afternoon, Mike Medina, the city planner. So before you is a local funding agreement for the activities for arterial one. And so the estimate here, in the backup, if you look at attachment C, there's a participation between the federal government and the local municipality, eighty-twenty. One of the things that I want to point out is that at the MPO, when they submit for a call for projects, there is a point system that is awarded to municipalities for going above and beyond. And so our local contribution in totality, if you look at the subtotal, is one point seven eight million dollars. So the entire project as a whole would be four point eight three two nine four one. And this activity would actually allow us to move forward with work authorization number three that was approved earlier for the same set project. Any questions?
This isn't the La Popa, right? This is the actual funding for it?
This is a La Popa, sir, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part. This is for what?
For the agreement.
Yes.
It's called abbreviation La Popa. The only concern, I only have, the only concern is that when I was at the MPO yesterday, Wednesday, I'm at the T-PAC, they red flagged it because we didn't have the La Popa ready.
Correct.
So what's the holdup? Because we're susceptible of not getting this project.
Right, so the MPO has a tier system of notifying the board members of any potential risk of a project. So there's a green and an amber and then the red. As I understand it from MPO documents, we're actually in the amber. And so my communication to them is that we had this meeting set. And so we needed to have some coordination with the Texod District, which I've already done. And so we have clarified some of the elements here. But ultimately, is that that system is in awareness because there's been practices in the past where municipal staff members didn't notify the elected body what was going on. So when the projects would come to the MPO at the end of the fiscal year, the FHWA would require us to probably move those projects from funding. But as it turns out for today is that with this passage, we should be clear of any potential federal loss of money.
Okay, so with the approval, then tomorrow, you're going to give them a call, right? And let them know that we already approved it because Roger was notified me that if we didn't call him, this might not go through.
So what we'll do is that we'll communicate to the executive director of the MPO, let them know that this action was taken. And we should be clear so that the next meeting, which will be at the Transportation Policy Board, we can make that statement.
Okay.
But remember is that it would take the entire policy board to defund it.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what the issue that we had yesterday, I mean, Wednesday,
where we were knocking some projects because of that particular thing.
Right.
So we don't want it to happen to us because I'm one of those that if we do it for them and we're in the same boat, then we're going to do it ourselves.
Right, and I think what I need to emphasize to this body is that it takes a lot of coordination between the municipality and Texod.
As long as we're, we're, we're working on it, you know, let us know and notify the MPO tomorrow, please.
Yes, sir.
That's one thing I will say is let them know what we're doing so that we won't have this issue in the MPO.
Okay.
Ms. Yellos?
So in reading, in reading part of this right now, are you stating that we are going to, the City of Socorro is going to contribute a little bit more than twenty percent? Is that what I heard?
Yes.
The beginning of your statement?
Yes.
And how much, how, what's the difference that we're contributing?
So the MPO only has finite money. So for example, if you look at attachment C, the, it was a little bit, little over three point five million. We are competing for a construction project in year twenty twenty-nine for roughly twenty-six million dollars. The MPO, when it developed several years ago, the project selection process, we wanted to make sure that the municipality or the sponsoring agency coming forward would put some skin in the game. So aside from the twenty percent that's required under the federal requirement, we wanted the municipality to come in and have more leverage. So if we're competing, like for this example with Horizon, which we actually were, we came in and we put in a million dollars above our twenty percent contribution. In the end, the MPO awarded us the money. And whether it was because we went above and beyond, it's a possibility. But in the end, is that our contribution is above the twenty percent.
Mr. Rosario?
And to add to that, the reason why that happened was because when we started back in two thousand thirteen, we had the best, and I, you were still the director, Mr. Medina was the director. And he was there when I spoke to all the board members and said, how is it possible that you're going to kill ours, which we had a ninety-two, I believe, and it was safe routes to school, okay? And I told them, why are you knocking us out if we had the best scores? And they still knocked our project out. So this was something that Mr. Medina at that time said, well, you know what? It's kind of unfair, let's try to work with the municipalities and see how to better their scores and their opportunities. So he came up with that years ago. We approved it and that's why we get more points on our, on our, on our scoring system. So every time that there's a safe route to school or different projects for any projects, period, that are eligible, if you give a little bit more, you add a little bit more points to your, so there will be, you could say it's a little harder to deny those when it comes to a vote. So that's why it is. And it's, I think it's a good thing because.
Well, basically, for our constituents is that the MPO sees that they'll have a little bit more funds to allocate to other projects by allowing, you know, us to bring in a little bit more. But, and not actually bring in the twenty percent, but more than the twenty percent. Is that the way they?
So, so every MPO is very different. And so historically, this MPO, it would just honor the twenty percent. And so I will give you a very quick assessment is that when, in twenty fifteen, when there was a change of administration at the city of El Paso, I had forewarned the new administration that they were going to lose. I had forewarned the new administration that they were gonna lose fifteen million dollars because they had all these projects and they did not have the funding. So if they had ten million dollars worth of projects, they didn't have the equivalent twenty percent. So what was happening is that everybody was submitting projects regardless of any commitment from a council. So that's why we come before you, and we say, "We're trying to submit this project to the MPO. There's a requirement to have a resolution." So what's happened now is that going back and saying, "If a municipality puts more skin in the game," like in this case, the MPO only had three point five million. Our project is above and beyond three point five million. So if we come back and we say, "We're going to contribute a million dollars," we have already surpassed the twenty percent, but the twenty percent is a federal requirement.
Okay. Makes sense.
And another note, the reason why this is good as well is because El Paso had, and they didn't lose fifteen, they lost 26 million dollars at the end. That's a lot of projects. The MPO is, you come, you apply, and El Paso has the, all the time, they come and they, if there's 10 million dollars, they'll put 15 to 20 million dollar projects. And then we'll put ours at half a million, or a million, and stuff like that. So they don't give anybody else room to breed. Basically, that's what it is. So this will ensure us to be able to get our projects done. We don't have the budget for this kind of project in our budget, okay? So we, as the city, look at other means, as grants or the MPO to look and get our projects done. So that, this is something that is good, and we should just move forward. This will help us with other future grants, so, and with the MPO as well.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Mr. Perez, Sessom, and Ivan Colompielo.
Yes. Moving back to item number fifteen. Public hearing of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Chapter Eight Business, Chapter Twelve Emergency Management and Services, Chapter Eighteen Health and Public Welfare, Chapter Twenty-Two Human Relations and Social Services, Chapter Twenty-Eight Nuisances, Chapter Thirty-Six Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Chapter Thirty-Eight Zoning, Chapter Forty-Two Traffic and Vehicles, and Chapter Forty-Six Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City, and to amend various sections thereunder pertaining to the establishment of a planning and zoning supervisor, and the assignment of duties formerly assigned to the director of the Planning and Zoning Department and the planning director, and to amend various sections of Chapter Forty-Six Zoning to eliminate the administrative official and assign its duties to the building official. Seven fifty-one, seven fifteen, public hearing is now open. Seven sixteen, public hearing is now closed. Item number sixteen. Second reading and adoption of an ordinance to amend Chapter Two Administration, Chapter Eight Business, Chapter Twelve Emergency Management and Services, Chapter Eighteen Health and Public Welfare, Chapter Twenty-Two Human Relations and Social Services, Chapter Twenty-Eight Nuisances, Chapter Thirty-Six Streets, Sidewalks, and Other Public Places, Chapter Thirty-Eight Zoning, Chapter Forty-Two Traffic and Vehicles, and Chapter Forty-Six Zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the City, and to amend various sections thereunder pertaining to the establishment of a planning and zoning supervisor, and the assignment of duties formerly assigned to the director of the Planning and Zoning Department and the planning director, and to amend various sections of Chapter Forty-Six Zoning to eliminate the administrative official and assign its duties to the building official.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Mr. Rodriguez?
I just want to say, I'm sorry to Ms. Navarro, because I made her, I wanted to make sure, because I didn't, I didn't like the way that, that we, people don't know, is that when our backup, they give us what the changes are. But I don't really like to see just the scratches and the changes. I said, "I wanna see the ordinance and stuff." I thought it was one ordinance, and I made our staff print it them out. They're all these, okay? So I went, I only got to half, so I want to say I'm sorry, because I just, yeah, so I killed my troops. But one of the things, I wanted to make sure what we were changing, and I wanted to see the whole ordinance, and I thought, like I said, it was one, but I just wanted to say thank you. And I know it's a lot of hard work. People don't understand that. And I won't do it again. I won't. I did go through half, and I understood what we're changing now. So that's, I just want to throw that out.
It was a necessity to make these changes because there was a structural change in the Planning and Zoning Department. We no longer have a director, but a lot, part of the administrative components were passed over to the Planning and Zoning Supervisor. And so with that is that we have to go back and make changes to the extant codes.
Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Mr. Perez, Sessom, and Ivan Colompielo.
Yes. Item number seventeen. Discussion on Action to Approve Proposed Development Agreement for Vista Bonita Estates. Do you have a motion?
What is their staff recommend?
So the staff recommendation is that the, with regard to the rock wall, certainly lose it at the discretion of the body. In regard to the Anderson Road development is that it currently has no funding available. We would have to work with Texod for any type of access to it. And so the five-year timeframe, right now, the assessment is that the city wouldn't be able to operate it. This would require us to also have conversations about intimate domain for a portion of it. And so part of the assessment that is for Anderson Road, I don't think that we have the full financial capability currently to move in that direction. I think the work on the capital improvement program has justified that, that there is higher needs based on risk. With regard to elements that the city staff, in my opinion, would have an absolute requirement to approve certain things, there's state law that actually guides us in what we need to be doing. So for example, here, the improvement plans for the subdivision are written in the absolute. There's no possibility of us bringing it to the commissioners or to this body for denial. So those are the staff recommendations.
Make a motion to approve our staff's recommendation. Right? Jim?
Yeah, I think I would be more specific. I mean, you have a proposed development agreement that's been signed by the developer, and your options are to approve it, to reject it, or you attempt to negotiate modifications to it with the developer. But keep in mind, the last round of negotiations took fifteen months.
Right. You know, if I can just clarify is that from the plat perspective, under state requirements, it's approved. So moving forward here is an agreement for what the constituency in that area was asking for. And I guess also some dedication from the developer here for a roadway. But I think in its absolute term is that with regard to the rock wall, at some point in time, the constituency that lives there would be probably required to maintain it. It wouldn't be something that the city would move forward with, in terms of maintenance. The Anderson Road, again, I don't think that it's something that the city would see as the highest priority. We would have to acquire it, part of the right-of-way. And then with regard to the improvements for the subdivision improvement plans, there's already a mechanism to do that, as I understand, we're waiting for the governor to sign a more restrictive one. But nonetheless, is that my professional opinion is that this agreement really doesn't do anything for the city.
Mike, is the term, you said five years or fifteen years?
No, it's five years.
Anderson Road?
I believe it was five years, and that we would have to open an escrow account for the money. And within five years, if the city was not able to build it, we would have to return the money back to the developer. I believe it was five years.
Yeah, I think it's been, it's three point one, it's three point one six.
Right, it's fifteen.
Was it fifteen, fifteen years?
Elsewhere, it's 2028, correct?
But it's what?
The three point, it's, there's a reversion provision, where if you don't acquire Anderson Road, it's sort of aspirational. They wanted us to commit to acquire Anderson Road, and have the input from the staff, but we're not sure we have funds yet. We'll try, we use our best efforts, or we could try to find ourselves to acquire the property. And so there's a reversion provision that if we don't acquire or approve it within fifteen years, then that dedication goes back to the developer.
You know what, can I, can I move this, because I want to talk to you, Jim, in executive about...
Sure, you can always adjourn to the executive session to consult with your attorneys. And mayor, if the council is inclined to do that, so that you don't have to do applies, I would suggest also we can apply item thirty-one and address that in executive session for the purposes of consulting with lawyers, because that's interesting information about...
Yes. Make a motion to adjourn, I mean, to adjourn, to, not yet. Moving to executive?
Second.
Both items?
For the purposes of consulting with your attorney.
No, we don't have a motion. So we're motioning it to go to executive. Yeah.
Item number thirty-one and seventeen. Ms. Rodriguez?
Aye.
Mr. Navarro?
Yes.
Ralph Duran?
Yes.
Mr. Perez, Sessom, and Ivan Colompielo.
Seven twenty-five. At this time, we're adjourning to executive session.